...in the Town and Niskuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Twitty, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Here.
Ms. Shenfield?
Here.
Mr. Scruby Tennis?
Here.
Mr. McPartlin?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
Mr. Diarpino?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here. Okay, we got a couple sets of minutes to approve, starting with April 29th meeting, which are included in your packet. Do I have a motion to approve the April 29th meeting minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Move by Mr. Scruby Tennis, have a second?
I'll second, I have a proposed modification.
Seconded by Mr. McPartlin, and we'll open that for discussion.
On page eight, there's a line addressing a comment that I made, line 293, regarding some trees located at the front of the property in question. The record reflects that I stated the trees were blossoming. I don't know if I was that gratuitous with my comment, but I wanted to note that I did preface my comment by saying this was a completely uneducated, non-expert opinion. And I also wanted to mention for the record that, in driving by that property again, I did notice that there is one tree that could by no means be characterized as such. It's dead.
Yeah, there's...
And so I propose actually we're striking this last line from the minutes entirely, or adding that I prefaced it by saying I'm not an expert in these matters of...
Well, we could say...
Tree health, overall.
I mean, I'm just doing this from memory, but I think you said that it looked like some of the trees were starting to have leaves, which is probably why we changed it to blossoming, because that was faster to write. But we could say, it stated that, you know, some of the trees were starting to have leaves, but the lawn and surrounding property definitely needed work, something like that?
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments, corrections, or changes to the minutes? I have none. Nobody else? Okay, I guess we'll make a friendly amendment to the minutes that's pretty straightforward, and we'll vote on approval of the modified minutes, if that's okay with everybody? So all those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none opposed, the minutes from April 29th are approved, and we'll move to the minutes of the May 13th meeting next. Same thing, do I have a motion to approve the 513 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McPartlin, have a second?
Second.
Seconded, I'm losing it, by D.C. Shenfield, right? All right, and let's see, comments, I think I have some here this time, as soon as I find them. Just a question, maybe just a question for Jeff or Laura, on page six, line 245, is that NOT was issued, is that NOI on the bottom, is that supposed to be?
Line which one?
Line 245, page six, 016.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be NOI, not NOT, is that, or is it stated?
Yeah, yeah, it's backwards. Oh wait, so the stormwater issues will be resolved once and...
Notice of intent, is it supposed to be, NOI, or?
Yeah, I think it should be NOI.
Yeah, and it's the same thing on the next line, 246, she didn't know it...
Yeah, that one should be NOI.
So I think they're both of them, just NOI, just typo, okay?
Yep, thanks.
All right, and let's see, I've got one other thing I gotta look at here. Page 11, line 443, the wording of April, is that supposed to be April 20th, this is April CO?
Oh, yeah.
April 20th, is that what it was? I can't remember.
I think that was actually the mistake. So the resolution said April CO, and we were...
Oh, okay, good.
...to April 30th, yeah.
I just couldn't remember, thanks.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was supposed to be a date, okay. And let me see if there's something else, page 15, I got something else, maybe, maybe. Nope.
I have one proposed change on page eight, line 295, change Van Rankin to Van Brankin.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
295. All right, I just gotta look at one quick thing here. I had another note, but I don't know what I wrote down. Okay, I guess that's it for me. Any other comments, or suggestions, or changes to the minutes? Again, they're pretty straightforward changes, just typographical stuff, so we'll accept the minutes as modified, if that's okay with everybody? All those favor the minutes as modified signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none opposed, we unanimously accept the minutes from the 513-19 meeting as modified. All right, next up on the agenda, thank you everybody, is a public hearing. Tonight we have a public hearing on application for a special use permit and site plan approval for a farmer's market at 2227 Knott Street. Mr. Twitty, would you please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given pursuant to zoning ordinance of the Town Niskuna New York and the applicable provisions of town law of the state of New York. A public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town Niskuna in the Town Board Meeting Room at 1 Niskuna Circle on the 10th day of June 2019 at 7:00 PM to consider an application from the Town Niskuna and the Niskuna Consumers Co-op Incorporated for a site plan review and special use permit at 2227 Knott Street relative to the following: For the location and operation of a farmer's market in the parking lot of the Niskuna Consumers Co-op located at 2227 Knott Street, and the property is located in the CN Neighborhood Zoning District. A copy of the site plan will be available for inspection in the Town Clerk's Office and the Planning Department in the Niskuna Town Office Building and at the public hearing. All parties in interest and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard by the Planning Board at the public hearing to be held as aforementioned. By order of the Planning Board of the Town Niskuna New York, Kevin Walsh, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Laura, did you want to say anything as an overview as representative of the town for this?
Yes, this is what we looked at last meeting, and it is approximately 10 to 12 vendors that are tucked in along the side of the co-op, on the same side as the building, where they have the chili cook-off currently. They proposed to use existing parking everywhere, and wouldn't be closing any of the businesses down, so it would be concurrent with everything that's going on in that area. The CAC did review, and we might want to make some additional provisions for handicap parking spaces during the operation of the market, but for now, as long as they're running it on that side, we'll have some police helping people cross back and forth as well, to make sure that it's safe for people to cross back and forth, because I think the majority of people will be parking across the street.
Okay, so tonight's the public hearing, I'd just like to mention, I was looking at the upcoming meetings, I see the Town Board has a special meeting tomorrow night.
Has a public hearing tomorrow night.
And there's a public hearing also, so the public will also have an opportunity tomorrow night at the Town Board's meeting to speak, and they also have a tentative resolution, I believe, drawn up for tomorrow on their...
No.
No? They don't?
Nope, it's for the 20th, I think. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, we can pull it up and look. But anyway, I just want to make sure we be aware there's a special meeting tomorrow night, and you have the opportunity to be heard tomorrow night also in front of the Town Board. So with that said, the public hearing for Farmer's Market at 2227 Knott Street is open. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding this public hearing, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear what you have to say. Farmer's Market, and the floor is open.
Gail King, 1633 Balltown Road, 2215 Knott Street. I'd like to recommend that this be approved in anticipation of Knott Street being moved south, so that therefore the co-op and all the buildings in that area would have more room to participate in these kinds of activities, and it would be much safer. There would be no crossing roads and police involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing?
Hello, Michelle Lansing, 1468 Villa Del Mar. So, I wasn't going to speak, I just wanted to come here until I just heard two things. One was for now. So my question is, if this is a successful endeavor, and that it wants to grow beyond the 10 or 12 spaces, where does the traffic go that would normally park in the large lot? Because it would make sense, then, that the farmer's market would move to the large lot across the street. Does that then make my neighborhood a parking lot? As you probably know, there has been a longstanding desire for the residents of Old Niskuna to live harmoniously with the businesses that have been deemed as part of the Town Overlay District. We have zero desire for our homes to become part of a commercial district. We want to support the businesses, but we also want to protect our homes. So, I don't know what's going to happen, I'm just asking what's the for now? What happens afterwards? So that's one comment. You know, as I started, I got the notice in the mail, and I started reading up on it, because I remember the survey that was last November, and I remember that there was talk about it being at Town Hall. So I said, yeah, what happened with all that? So I went back and I did my reading, and I read that, you know, perhaps up by the gazebo wasn't the best idea, because it wasn't, maybe the ground wasn't good for the vendors, and then maybe it wouldn't seem proper, like we were with the co-op and not supporting our local businesses. So I get, and I do like the idea of supporting the co-op, because I think the co-op does an excellent job of bringing local vendors to the community. But I also want to make sure that we do an excellent job of protecting the neighborhood around the business. So that's one thing, so the for now. And the other thing was Ms. King's comment about moving Knott Street south. I cannot say enough about how much the neighbors of Villa Del Mar and Clifton Park do not want Knott Street moved south. It might be safer to them in having more people park directly in front of their businesses, but to move a busy street like Knott Street closer to the dozen or so kids that live immediately on that end of the street is just beyond thought to me. I leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public hearing?
I gotta grab a pen, my pen's out.
Hi, I'm Sarah Bolovsky, I live at 2023 Garden Drive, I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Niskuna Co-op. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to do this, we're really excited to partner with the town. I think, as many of you know, the Niskuna Co-op's history goes back to the 1940s, it was a community endeavor that was launched to bring a grocery store closer to the community. We really consider ourselves a farmer's market every day, because most of the vendors, especially in our produce and meat, are locally sourced. So we're very, you know, excited to kind of partner with the town and bring this opportunity to address the questions that were raised. I certainly appreciate the concern about the community. At this point, we really are hoping to fill those 10 spots in the small parking lot, and this is two hours on a Saturday morning, three times, for the summer, just July, August, and September, second Saturday. We purposely made it early in the morning, because we don't frankly want, that's typically when farmer's markets are, and we also don't want it to start to impede the flow of traffic to our store. So there was an agreement that a Saturday made sense. I think it's an opportunity to showcase not only local food, but also local artisans in the area, everything has to be locally produced. To your second point about the movement of Knott Street, that's really, I know Gail talked about that, but to us, it's a very separate issue, and one that frankly is kind of not part of this conversation.
It's kind of how much room you would have.
Right, but I mean, I think that involves so many other government entities, that I think, you know, that's not something that we're kind of looking for.
Yeah, the public hearing tonight is on the farmer's market.
Correct.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay, and we're happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you. We know we'll be talking later on under, oh, we have a resolution tonight, so, for a recommendation, so. So this is the chance, or during privilege of the floor, to be heard, because we're going to take some action tonight. Anybody else for the public hearing on the farmer's market? No? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing for 2227 Knott Street. We'll move to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters at Town Niskuna, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we just know what you have to say. So privilege of the floor is open.
Just another possibility for the people on Villa Del Mar would be to make them have a private street. It's also been brought up to the town, and very positive results on that. So it could be more of a positive thing for Villa Del Mar than they're thinking right now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for privilege of the floor? Any planning and zoning matters?
Sorry if I'm out of turn, Scott Quinn will red cap sales regarding 1501 Union. Would this be the right type of this?
No, we'll, under, yep, we'll pull you up at, under discussion.
Okay, well, this is, first time, I didn't know.
No, no, but thank you for coming up, we appreciate it. Anybody else for privilege of the floor? No? Okay, all right, we'll close privilege of the floor, and we'll move on the agenda. We have no unfinished business tonight. We do have a few items, several items under new business, first being a resolution, Resolution 2019-14, a resolution for site plan approval of a directional sign at 1685 Providence Avenue. Mr. Twitty, would you please redo the resolution?
One of the purposes of the meeting was to take action on an application for site plan review. Whereas AJ Signs has made an application to the Planning Board for site plan review for a directional sign on the property located at 1685 Providence Avenue, as shown on the site plan dated as received by the Niskuna Building Department on June 4, 2008. And whereas the zoning classification of the property is R3, high-density residential. And whereas Section 220-26J Signs states, "In addition to the regulations of Section 220-22A10, one sign may be permitted at each access point to the site. In addition to the principal signs, any number of directional signs, each not to exceed four square feet in area and eight feet above average grade may be permitted. Signs for convenience service uses shall be limited to one externally lit wall sign, not to exceed 20 square feet in area. And whereas the directional sign as proposed has a square footage of 3.5 square feet and a height of 4.102 feet. And whereas this board has carefully reviewed the proposal, and by this resolution does set forth its decisionary on, now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds that the directional sign on the property located at 1685 Providence Avenue, as shown on the site plan received by the Niskuna Building Department on June 4, 2008, meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves this additional sign."
Thank you. I have a motion on the resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Move for adoption by Mr. Scruby Tennis, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Diarpino. Do you have a representative of the sign company? Please come on up, we can discuss this. First we saw it, it was over the weekend, so this is the first time we've had a chance to talk about it, so.
I'm Emma Van Vors with AJ Sign Company, I'm representing Hillcrest Village.
Okay, I took a look at the site today, I guess I don't have a problem with the sign. Is this vinyl letters on the sign? It doesn't really state on the...
Yeah, yep.
Vinyl letters. And I assume the reason is, is that people are pulling in, they're trying to find the leasing office, and this is to get them across the street?
Yes, myself included. So the first time when I went, I did the same thing, I pulled in there thinking, and then, you know, of course, people have to try to turn around and find it, so we're proposing this sign just for ease of access and safety for the residents of the location.
Yeah, I was down there today taking a look, is that the right language for a sign, say, "cross the street"? I mean, there's no, does that, you know, is it clear? There's one thing I thought of when I was down there, being an engineer, I was like, "cross the street", you know, I mean, is it, should say, the leasing office is at the East Apartments or something, or?
We've changed it. So we had it originally something, and then the customer was, asked for us to change it to this.
So this is, will work?
If you want it...
No, I don't want anything, I just, I just wanted to get your opinion, you're the sign expert.
No, I know, it would not be the way I would choose toward it, it doesn't seem like it flows, but...
Yeah, it didn't to me either.
The property manager asked for...
And actually, her notes show that she was, the words were a little bit different, she was looking for rental office on her submittal, not leasing office. I don't know if there's an illegal difference between those two or anything, but...
We chose leasing office only because it sounds a little better. We actually had, the prior signs we installed earlier in the year had rental, and before we installed, we changed it to leasing. We think it sounds a little bit classier, upscale, rather than rental.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem with the sign location, or the need for a sign, just I was kind of challenging the, you know, the words on it, whether that would make sense across the street, you know, for me, you know? But, I don't know, see if the rest of the board has any questions or concerns or not?
I can't remember if I put it in the agenda statement, but the thing I think we should check is that this is made from the same material and the same color scheme as all the other signs that are on the property.
It's going to be made of the same material, it's not the same color scheme. It is, but it doesn't have the blue. So the other signs at the property have like a teal color. We noticed that, I think somewhere it stated if it's not in black and white, to send to the Town Hall before the meeting, but it was black and white. So, I know that, I know that there was a no about color somewhere.
Yeah, because we just want to make sure that this sign looks like every other sign that they have, so all properties...
Yeah, it has a white background, and then it has gray border, a gray border, and then, so the color scheme goes, it just doesn't have the teal, which we can add if you feel necessary, but it's clean, it's clean and simple, and that's what we were going with. They rebranded, therefore they had a new logo, new colors, and this is more or less a formality in just trying to get people to easily locate the leasing office, instead of it be tied into a pretty sign.
Okay, I mean, I'm okay with sign, but you know, it's up to, I'll see if anybody else has any comments.
If they get lost, you'll come back with a new sign.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, they could probably...
That street.
They could probably change the words on the sign without needing to come back to the planning board.
I'll bring that up to the customer and just say, you know, as we discussed, I'll bring up a couple different ideas.
It looks like an effort to keep the verbiage to a minimum, and keep the size to a minimum, so they don't need a variance and all that good stuff, so.
Yes, yep.
I can appreciate that.
Okay, any other comments? Now seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Scruby Tennis?
Aye.
Ms. McPartlin?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye, resolution's approved.
Thank you.
Let's see how it works out?
Have a good night.
All right, thanks. All right, let's see, next resolution on the agenda, 2019-15, a resolution for sketch plan approval of a two-lot minor subdivision at 859 Pierce Road.
One of the purposes of the meeting was to take action on an application for sketch plan approval. Whereas Hans and Judith Knite, landowners, made an application to the Planning Board for a two-lot minor subdivision at 859 Pierce Road, as shown on a map entitled "Knite Proposed Subdivision for 61019", dated as received by the Planning Department on June 5, 2019. And whereas the zoning classification of the property is R1, low-density residential. And whereas this Planning Board and Zoning Commission has discussed the requirements of Chapter 189 of the Code of the Town Niskuna for street improvements, drainage, sewage, water supply, fire protection, and similar aspects, as well as the availability of existing services and other pertinent information, now therefore be it hereby resolved that this Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby classify this sketch plan as a minor subdivision as defined by Chapter 189 of the Code of the Town Niskuna, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant sketch plan approval for a two-lot minor subdivision at 859 Pierce Road, as shown on a map entitled "Knite Proposed Subdivision for 61019", dated as received on June 5, dated as received by the Planning Department on June 5, 2019.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Diarpino, do I have a motion on the resolution?
I so moved.
Move for adoption by Mr. Diarpino, do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Laflamme, and discussion. Anything? Hello?
Hi, Judy Knite from 859 Pierce Road. I just want to make sure, they do have this one for 610 in front of them?
Yes, we should.
Okay, which is slightly different than when we were here before.
The 25 feet?
Right, we went to 25 feet, and the other thing we did was, we actually, the house, we turned the house a little bit more this way, so that it, this is more privacy for everybody, not just for us, it's all the other lots, because, and when you're looking, we're just looking at land every which way. So we felt that that was maybe, you know, a little bit better. And it accessed the garage a little easier. So, this is, this is our new and improved. Now, you had questions for us?
That was the Conservation Advisory Council.
What are collection?
Their final sort of recommendation was that, well, they were reviewing it initially, they still have to look at it one more time, because you filled out the EAF just now, but it gets classified as a minor subdivision, I'm sorry about our system, then it gets denied, because sketch plan is when we classify a subdivision. So once we classified as minor, then it gets denied, then you have to go to the zoning board, because you don't have enough frontage. So in that time, the CAC would finalize its recommendation. But they were just looking at the environmental assessment form, these questions here.
Yes, which we brought to the table.
Yeah, that's the Conservation Advisory Council, yeah.
Okay, so for here...
So for here, we'll, yeah, we'll make, this is for sketch plan approval, if we approve it tonight, and then you, like you say, you make the submittal, and then it'll be denied, because it doesn't meet the requirements of the zoning. And then we'll come back to also, as you see, and to us, to make a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, whether or not they grant or deny the area variance. And then you'll go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and see how you make out.
Okay, so we come, we come back here again?
Yep, we'll make a recommendation. So this gets the ball rolling, this means we're satisfied, if we, obviously if we vote in a positive, satisfied, we'll be able to move this forward tonight to keep it going.
Okay.
All right?
Appreciate that.
No problem. Do you have anything else to add, David, or Laura?
No, I think this reflects the comments that we had, basically improving the road frontage for the driveway, you know, it is going to go to the zoning board for their review and approval. I think keeping it on the north end is the appropriate location for the driveway, and then ultimately where that house is placed, we can talk about that down the road, but it's a minor issue at this point.
Yep, it's got to be in the building envelope anyway, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Laura, can I just ask one question, a map of the environments?
Yeah.
So, I ask, is, in terms of, you know, unintended consequences, are we inviting, for instance, the lots, the 900, 902, 888, 876 come to mind, they're extremely deep, they are, is this kind of an invitation or such an arrangement? I don't know if people have approached you over time?
They haven't approached me, but that's certainly something that we looked at with this map, is, you know, one of the things that we had written about in our complaint is like, is there a way to have better connectivity with another neighborhood? Like, I think that they really wanted to discourage these lots from keyhole lots, and they wanted them to combine together and kind of get a road through there, but we know that 834 Pierce Road, that one came through not very long ago, and the reason that that one is the way it is, is because there's just, that's all wetlands back there. It's all wetlands. So, I think 868 might not be as much wetlands, and maybe it's something that we really need to revisit, but I'm not sure that it's feasible to put a road through there anymore, or even desirable. So, are we inviting potentially those three lots to do a keyhole and put a home back there, potentially? But I mean, realistically, if we look at where that's connecting, and whether or not there should be a road through there, I think the options are becoming much more limited based on the approvals of things that have happened around it. I still think that we really need to be careful with keyhole lots, and the zoning board, we are okay with stuff, and then the zoning board still says no, we know that happens, I think I told you guys that, but, shared driveways for keyhole lots, like huge issue, I think anytime that we can avoid that, we absolutely should, shared utilities, you know, some of the issues that come from keyhole lots are really difficult, and stuff that we should continue to mitigate against, but... But, I mean, we could look at them more closely, but it's certainly, you know, 875, 879, 865 Pierce Road, 847, 839, 845. I mean, that's definitely setting the tone of this subdivision.
Yep.
I don't know whether or not 859 has as much bearing on, you know, 900, 902, 888, 876 as some of the stuff that's happened on the other side of the road. But it's certainly, you need to be mindful of it.
Yeah, we just have to look at each on a case-by-case basis, that's all we can do. You know, again, assuming, assuming the, you know, the power of the ZBA, whether they get through the ZBA or not. I mean, depends on how well you prepare yourself and, and they're the decision maker for this, you know, area variance, so. But yeah, I know we talked about that, but you know, again, we've already kind of said it, right? With 845, and I think the applicant mentioned that in one of the first meetings, right? 879, 865, 868. So it's kind of already occurring, even though it would have been nice to have been able to have some kind of a road, but it would require all the residents to, you know, kind of participate in that, which would be, I think, a tough thing to do, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And any other discussion at all in the resolution?
The result of this would be exactly what we try to prescribe in the comprehensive plan.
But my concern is always being selective, you know.
Well.
You've got to look at each as a case-by-case basis, so. Any other comments?
I think one of the differences with these lots is that there was a bit of a precedence, but it is landlocked as to you can't go beyond five or six more properties with this ever happening again. So if this was on a new development and the roads were curvy and windy, and this was starting to become more than an existing condition, and it was intentional, then I would, I would think that the comp plan would weigh a little bit more heavier on not approving those keyhole lots.
This is one of the roads, one of the areas that was specifically looked at when the comp plan was devised the way it is.
Okay.
And the increase of the frontage to 25 feet just doesn't do it for me.
Anybody else? Please call a roll, Jeff.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield.
Aye.
Mr. Scraby Tennis.
Aye.
Ms. McPartland.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Yay.
Mr. Diarpino.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye, sketch plan is approved and we'll, I guess you'd submit the building applications, is that what they do?
A minor subdivision application.
Application, and then we'll see you back. Okay? Thank you. Okay, let's see. All right. Number three, resolution 2019-16, a resolution for site plan approval of a 25-unit apartment building at 2340 Knot Street East. Mr. Puddy?
One of the purposes of the meeting was to take action on a final site plan. Whereas David Fusco has made an application to the Planning Board and Zoning Commission for site plan review for the construction of a three-story multifamily dwelling on 2340 Knot Street East, Niskuna. And whereas the site plan is shown in the map entitled Layout Lighting and Landscaping Apartments Not Landing West, Knot Street East, Town Niskuna, County of Schenectady, State of New York, prepared by ABD Engineers LLP on October 15, 2013, and last revised on June 7, 2019. And whereas the zoning classification of the property is R3, high-density residential. And whereas the planning board conducted a public hearing on September 14, 2016, to consider the application for site plan approval. And whereas this application was referred to the Schenectady County Planning Department on April 28, 2016. And on May 9, 2016, they responded stating that they defer the project's review to local consideration. And whereas the application was referred to the Niskuna Conservation Advisory Council for its review on December 2, 2015. And it recommended that a negative declaration be prepared with recommendations to the applicant. And whereas this sport is carefully reviewed, this carefully reviewed the proposal, and by this resolution does set forth its decision hereon. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the plant, that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission, acting in accordance with state environmental quality review regulations and local laws, determined that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment. Nearby directs the town planner to file a negative declaration. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does grant final site plan approval for the site plan of the map entitled Layout Lighting and Landscaping Apartment Knots Landing West, Knot Street East, Town Niskuna, County of Schenectady, State of New York, prepared by ABD Engineers LLP on October 15, 2013, and last revised on June 7, 2019, withholding facade approval with the following conditions. One, this resolution shall be incorporated into any deed of sale for this property, and the conditions of this resolution shall be binding on the applicant, the owner, if different than the applicant, or successors, assigns, or transferees. Two, wetlands may not be disturbed, drained, or physically altered in any way without first contacting the Army Corps of Engineers. Additionally, the Town Niskuna requires that no land can be disturbed within a 25-foot buffer from the boundary of the wetland. Three, prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall participate in a pre-construction meeting with the Town Niskuna and shall address any concerns raised by the town or town-designated engineer. Four, prior to site disturbance, the site plan map shall be modified to reflect agreed-upon decisions of the pre-construction meeting, if any, and distributed as required to the town to avoid all, and to all involved contractors. Final site plan shall be submitted to the town labeled for construction. Five, prior to site disturbance, confirmation by the applicant to the Department of Public Works that material specifications and site details, including road and utility plan profiles, meet town standards. Six, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any engineering and drainage concerns will be addressed to the satisfaction of the Town Superintendent of Water Sewer Engineering. Seven, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any questions or concerns raised by the town-designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. Eight, prior to the pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall pay a parkland fee of $18,750 at 25 units, it's $750 each unit. Nine, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit a final, a final facade and landscaping drawings for approval by the planning board. Ten, prior to the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall sign a stormwater control facility maintenance agreement and access agreement in order to ensure that the proposed stormwater facilities are installed and maintained per plans. Eleven, in accordance with Chapter 180 of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town Niskuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the Superintendent of Water Sewer Engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. Twelve, prior to site disturbance, the applicant must secure any necessary approvals from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and the Schenectady County Department of Health. Thirteen, prior to any certificate of occupancies, the applicant shall deed to the Town Niskuna an easement along the western property line adjacent to Van Antwerp Village Apartments for the purpose of a future multi-use path, as depicted in the above, in the above referenced site plans. The deed shall be approved by the town attorney and filed in the Schenectady County Recorder's Office at the applicant's expense.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Diarpino, have a motion?
Yes, so move.
Move the resolution for approval, that a second?
Second by Mr. Scraby Tennis and Mr. Pulashy, should I come on up? If you have any questions, any in discussion? Any question I had, one of the questions I had like for Laura was that by proving this tonight, I know that the architectural review, but they allowed to get a site prep permit, is it, what's that called?
Uh, grading.
Grading, they'll be able to start and clearing, grading.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't be able to put any foundation in until they come through the open items, the conditions, is that?
Well, actually, our language is prior to the issuance of a building permit, and a building permit does include, uh, clearing and grading. I don't, so if we wanted to be clear and allow the clearing and grading, we should probably say prior to the issuance of a building permit for the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wasn't clear what we could do, because I know you may, if your equipment became available, right, Mr. Pulashy, you wanted to get started on something, right? We close, close the open items, so. So we need to modify which condition was that, Laura?
Number nine, prior to issuance of, and I apologize, I think your numbers are, Jeff was reading them right, but they're not right in your packet. So I'm going with the, please renumber them.
Yeah, we need to renumber them, start, yeah.
Number nine is prior to the issuance of a building permit for the building, the applicant shall submit final facade and landscaping drawing.
For the building, okay. Any other changes that we're going to need to make? David or anybody? Comments?
We met this past week and decided to parcel this into site plan and building. The, the plans are finished, the elevations are not. So we didn't think there was enough time to complete the elevations, to have a complete package for today's meeting.
All right, so we'll just follow up on that, yeah, we can keep things moving. I know we want to keep it moving, right?
Yeah, we'd appreciate it.
All right. I don't, I don't have a problem, and I appreciate everybody's hard work on this, David, and, and working with the applicant and your cooperation. The changes, I noticed that you changed the sidewalk in the final.
Yeah, so.
And the AC units.
When we met, we looked at the, what we're calling the final footprint of the building. And the doorway is in the center. I know at the last meeting, we had discussed the sidewalk connection to Knot, Knot Street East. The previous site plan had showed the doorway off-centered. And now with everything being centered, and what we want to go with, with our, our final footprint, it actually made our site plan a little better as far as centering the, not only the door, but also the handicap space, the ramp, and the sidewalk out to the, to Knot Street East. I'll pull it up.
Yep, looks like a, a straighter route than what you had before, right? Yep. And the AC units, it looks like there's one unit per apartment, so there's 25 AC units?
Yes, yep.
That's typical for.
It is, yeah, because each, each unit will have their own.
Yeah, pay for their own.
Control, yes.
Will they be behind the shrubbery, you know?
They'll definitely be screened.
That's something we can also look at, right, when we get to final. But I mean, you gotta, you gotta have, I mean, that's.
I mean, it's a mansory with a flat roof building, you'd see the units on, on the roof.
Yeah, these are on the, on the, on the ground, right?
I mean, most, well, half of them are going to be tucked behind the building. They're not terribly large units, so.
Yeah.
So can I ask, Dave, we're asking, looking for site plan approval without elevations. Could you just, could you just explain that to me again?
So the plans, we had the floor plans finished.
Yeah.
But the elevations didn't match up with these plans. So the site plan that Luigi did here, that footprint matches these plans that were part of your package.
Yeah.
When we met to review those elevations, they're still not correct.
I don't, I don't know that I see, maybe it's just the date that's throwing me off.
Yeah, the dates are wrong.
But, but also when I look at the parking garage underground, I see that there's a door on either side, and I know that can't be.
That's not correct. This side over here has, has a wall on the right-hand side. It should have a wall.
I don't see that wall, so I'm just. It's not a wall.
Yeah, so, yeah, because it's still showing a pull-through garage.
Well, the resolution doesn't call out that drawing, does it? So I was gonna, wasn't sure if it really mattered, but I was going to mention, uh, if it came up, that this looks like an outdated floor plan to me.
It's actually the updated floor plan with the wrong date.
Except it's still showing, it's still showing an entrance on both sides of the building.
And I also noted that the elevator shaft on the garage level does not appear to line up with the elevator shaft on the first floor.
But the, as long as the resolution doesn't call out that, reference that, which it doesn't. All right, those are the things that you're going to work through as part two, I guess, on this, is to make sure that's okay. And it's going to come back to this board, is my understanding, right? You're going to work with the applicant, you're going to come back, and we're going to, you know, give a thumbs up that we're okay with the final design before they start building, the building itself.
Right.
This will allow them to get a hole in the ground, start moving some dirt and get ready. And in parallel, they'll finalize it, and I'm sure they'll come in and see David and Laura.
As project lead, you'll, back to the board or just as project?
They'll come back to us. I assume it was going to come back to us, right?
Yeah, it says that the elevation and landscaping plan come back to you guys.
Yep.
I'm sorry, and it's coming back to us in what fashion? What's the approval, with that site plan, it's going to be?
We could do it as a site, so what we were, we did this for 1769 Union Street. The, the footprint of the building isn't going to change. But do you remember, we didn't like the way they had the door facing, or they didn't have a door facing Union Street, and we wanted them to have a door. So in that case, we actually had just had them come back and do a report, and everybody at the planning board was like, yeah, okay. But we wanted to be a little bit stronger with this one, so we put approval. I mean, it could be as simple as just a vote on a discussion item, or we could formalize it with a site plan amendment, like we've seen recently. And then the take a roll call.
I mean, either way, we could just, you know, it'd be a resolution, take a roll call, right? I mean.
Yeah.
So.
If we wanted to be very specific, we could update that language to say, um, for approval by the planning board via site plan amendment.
Which condition is that, Laura?
Number nine.
I'm sorry, Laura, I didn't track that, could you just repeat that?
So it would be prior to issuance of a building permit for the building, the applicant shall submit final facade and landscaping drawings for approval by the planning board via site plan amendment.
Okay.
Can I just ask, imagine a circumstance where we're not, there's disagreement over, over, over the footprint, um, working with the facade. I'm just, I'm, let's, let's entertain a possible disagreement. What's our, what's our authority to suspend work? I mean, imagine a situation where the footprint excavation doesn't go to plan, requiring a different facade, we don't approve. Just what's our hook?
Um, so, I mean, I guess you could excavate for the foundation, but you couldn't start the foundation without a building permit for the building.
You need a foundation permit, right?
Yeah. So I mean, we've looked at this site plan for almost three years, and it's hardly changed.
Okay.
They could go in there and clear and grade, but they couldn't actually pour the foundation until we were okay with the facade matching the site plan. Yeah.
I just want the sequence, okay.
What's your opinion, talking to the applicant, are we going to get there on the facade?
Yes, yep. We're just waiting on the architect, he's super busy and, you know, just need to fine-tune a few things that we talked about on Thursday, last Thursday. But as Laura stated, the site plan isn't going to change from what you see here. The footprint will remain the same. You know, it's just a matter of fine-tuning the building elevations. That's pretty much it.
Luigi, what's the distribution between the bedroom count, ones and twos?
Yes, ones and twos. I don't know the percentages. Again, we don't, we don't have the full architectural plans at this point. That's what we're working on. Yeah, I think so.
I think Dave Fusco said mostly two bedrooms, like almost all two bedrooms.
I mean, they are higher rent, so I would, I would assume having that extra space, you would have two bedrooms. But again, I don't know the exact distribution.
Any other questions or comments, concerns at all? Okay, one thing we've got to do is we have an amendment to the condition number nine, which is number seven on the, on your paper. But we, because we've got to renumber them all. So it's going to read, prior to issuance of a building permit for the building, the applicant shall submit final facade and landscape, landscaping drawings for approval by the planning board via site plan amendments. That's what that's going to read. All right? So maybe we can do a show of hands, approving the amendment. Is everybody okay with the amendment? Please raise your hand if you support the amendment. We'll do it that way. As you miss on the amendment. Any other discussion at all?
I, I have one, actually, if you don't mind. It would be, I guess, number five, one, two, three, four, five. It's the first one on the third page. Prior to site disturbance confirmation by the applicant to the Department of Public Works that material specifications, site details, including road and utility plan profiles, meet town standards, right? That to me sounds more like a subdivision that the town would take over. This is a private development, all the roads, utilities would be privately owned. I didn't know if that's a standard resolution, or if that's something that should be modified.
Well, it's standard, and we would keep it in there because even for just the specs of tying into our manholes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just worked through those specifications at the pre-construction meeting, and I'm just, I hear blue bolts a lot, like you have to have the blue bolts and, you know, certain, you know, threads and stuff, but it's for connections to our utilities too.
Okay. But as far as thickness of pavement, things like that onsite, that's, you know, it is, we do have details together, but, you know.
I mean.
I guess it's a little different than the town specs.
Oh, okay. I mean, a lot of times the details you have in the packet are already town specs, but you're saying these ones are a little different?
Yeah, because, you know, as the engineer, we, you know, we spec out what we would want on our site. Um, a lot of times, right, town roads are designed a little bit more because, you know, they're, they're gonna be owned forever and ever and, and have a lot more traffic than, you know, just 25 units here, so we don't overkill the pavement design, but we certainly designed the pavement. Like you see a lot of our sites, you know, it's, it's a well-designed pavement, but I just, I, I guess I don't want the applicant to be stuck with.
Meeting the standards of the town.
Meeting the standards of the town, but I certainly understand, you know, your certain criteria for making the connections. I would agree with, with those.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess if we have the general understanding of that, then, you know, we could proceed with the way it's written.
We could modify, you say, as, as agreed upon in the pre-construction meeting?
Um, I mean, you can just remove including road and utility plan profiles, and that way it just says material specifications and site details meet town standards. And I'm, I'm also just not an expert, but my understanding is that your road is still gonna have to handle a 75,000 pound fire truck.
Absolutely, yes.
I mean, it may be like, it's almost exactly the same, even if it's your standard, like the difference between holding a 75,000 pound fire truck and what the town requires isn't that different?
It, no, it, it has to hold, uh, withstand the 75,000.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So are you thinking, uh, strike the word including road?
Including road and utility plan profiles, I'm fine with taking that out, but the material specs and site details still have to, because any tie-ins have to meet town spec. And that's something that we talk about at pre-construction meeting.
Yeah, that, that would be acceptable.
All right, so we're gonna strike including road and utility plan profiles, right?
Yeah.
So it'll be the material specifications, site details meet town standards though.
Just one more question, uh, for me. Luigi, are you still proposing the, the treatment system as identified in the November 2015 report, Duranco Advantex AX 100?
No.
That's, well, that's attached to our report.
We're not proposing, uh, the Arancos system at this, at any time, cause that, that was proposed at the time where, uh.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, we are not. We, we are connecting to the towns.
Okay. I was wondering why this was attached, I just wanted for clarification.
That's a good catch, right. Yeah, I'm not sure why that was attached.
That was part of the old.
Just for, for.
It was just in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, just for public clarification, you're tying into the.
Yes.
System, I just didn't want confusion, the public, if they saw the record.
Tying into District Six.
Yeah, right.
Right, yep.
I thought that's.
Okay, sorry. Not to confuse the matter, but even on private property, the engineering department requires you to use like, and this is for private property, so I don't know if it applies to you, but like SDR 26, not SDR 31 or whatever it is. So you still have to meet some town standards that are higher.
Yeah, that, that's understandable.
Okay, Laura, are you okay with the, with the modification to condition number five?
Mm-hmm.
Town from a town, and you're okay?
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll have to do a show of hands again. So we're gonna modify condition number five, which is three in your packet, basically striking including road and utility plan profiles, those words. Okay, again, we'll just do a show of hands, keep it clean here. All those in favor of the modification is unanimous, okay? So we have a modified resolution with a couple of modifications now. Any other concerns, questions, Mr. Pleschay at all, before we move forward, or anybody else?
I just wanted to recap, I think this plan, cause we've gone through several iterations of this, is the one I think that's the best use of the site. It's got the minimal impact, considering some of the other versions that we saw. The underground parking is only on one side, not coming out, creating a very difficult grading plan, um, on the bottom corner of it. The sidewalk works out better with shifting the entrance to the middle, and I think all the other screening and grading that's been done with plantings also has less interruption to existing tree lines that buffer the, the sides of the property. So I think we've, we've come quite a distance in about a year and a half.
Yeah.
To get to this resolution, so.
Yeah, thank you, I agree. Any other questions, comments?
I think it meets all the requirements.
It's gonna be a change, but, uh, hopefully, uh, you know, it'll be a positive thing. It'll be good for the community, for people to wanna live there and walk to the farmer's market and to chop, right, so on and so forth, okay? Anything else? Now please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Scruby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Sir DiRapino?
Aye.
Jim Walsh?
Aye. Resolution's approved.
All right, thank you, we'll see you as soon as we have the architecturals.
Great, thank you. All right, resolution number four for tonight. Hang in there, everybody. Resolution 2018-17, a resolution to make a recommendation to the town board for a special use permit at 2227 Knott Street for a farmer's market. Mr. Twitty?
One of the purposes of the meeting was to make a recommendation on a special use permit. Whereas the Niscuna Co-op and the town Niscuna have made an application to the planning board for a special use permit and site plan review for a farmer's market at 2227 Knott Street, as shown on an app, as shown in a site plan application entitled Layout for a Farmer's Market at Niscuna Co-op, dated May 6, 2019, and whereas the zoning classification of the property is CN, Neighborhood Commercial, and is, and is within the Town Center Overlay District. And whereas the planning board conducted a public hearing on June 10, 2019, to consider the application for a special use permit and site plan review, and whereas this application was referred to the Schenectady County Planning Department, and whereas this application was referred to the Niscuna Conservation Advisory Council, and whereas the Conservation Advisory Council reviewed the application on June 5, 2019, and at that time recommended that the lead agency issue a negative secret declaration, and whereas this board has carefully reviewed the proposal, and by this resolution does set forth its decision you're on, now be it, now therefore be it hereby resolved that the planning board and zoning commission does recommend to the town board that they grant the special use permit for a farmer's market at 2227 Knott Street, subject to final site plan approval with the following conditions. One, temporary handicap parking spaces shall be required to offset the spaces that are used during the farmer's market. Two, encourage pedestrian and bicycle amenities to promote walking and bicycling, and limit the impacts to the existing parking.
Okay, thank you. Motion on a resolution?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Scruby Tennis, and seconded by Mr. Laflamme. Okay, and we can have some discussion. There's a couple of things I was thinking about, just wanted to talk about, was, um, restrooms for, is there a restroom in a co-op? I don't know, if maybe, why don't you come on up, in case there's any questions, if, you know, if you don't mind, or? Just happened to be thinking of it.
Chairman, can I just clarify the for now question that came on the public hearing?
What was that?
The for, can I just clarify the for now question that came from the public hearing?
Okay, sure, yep.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, the reason I said that is because, um, if the farmer's market does move across the street, it's required to come back to the planning board for site plan approval.
Right.
So it doesn't need a new special use permit, but it would need site plan approval.
Correct.
As long as it stays on this side, it's fine. If it switches over to the other side, then it needs another site plan.
No, thanks Laura for that, yeah. We're basically acting on the proposal, which is, you know, the side of the co-op, not in the parking lot, and that, that would be a major change.
Yeah.
Might be some different issues, noise, whatever.
Yeah.
So that would come back to us, so.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Um, so just a question on bathrooms?
Hi, I'm Donna Evans, I'm also on the co-op board. Thanks for taking the time to, to consider this request. Yes, the bathrooms that are in the co-op would be open to the public.
Okay, thank you. And I think, the only thing is, Laura, in this, in the statement, I know you mentioned it earlier too, and you gave the overview about, um, you know, crossing guards, police. Is, is that a, a done deal? Is that what we're looking at, is to at least, uh, for, for the first couple?
This year, yes.
So the police will be, uh, helping, uh, traffic and people cross, just to make sure, see how it goes?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That was, you know, my concern is, you know, hopefully it's successful, but, uh, you know, can get congested down there until we, you know, kind of feel things out to see how it goes, you know?
Safety is also a high priority.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna have a problem trying to, uh, do a good thing, right? That was, that was the only thing I had, uh, so I was concerned about that. And we talked about, uh, the hours, I believe you said it was Saturdays from, I wrote down somewhere, but you can remind me. Was?
I think it's 8:30, I thought it was 8:30 to 11:30.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the second Saturday for July, August, August and September?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and the CAC's recommendation, which I think the town is very amenable to doing, is to putting up those highway signs that we have in the area ahead of time, so that people know that it's coming, and they know that, you know, they know to go, and they know to avoid if they don't wanna go through that intersection, so for both reasons, um.
Beautiful. Is, is there a lot of interest in vendors, is it, like, you're gonna fill it up, or? Yep, good.
The application says 12, but you said 10, just for clarification?
Um, I think you can actually fit 12. One, two, three, four, five.
I counted 12.
Yeah. So it's 10 to 12. I mean, if they didn't wanna fill that one over by the dumpster the first couple of times, it's totally fine.
If they wanted to expand beyond the 12, would have to come back to the board.
Yeah, I don't think you can fit any more than 12, if they're expanding.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And I've heard a lot of concern that it's too much for the site even as proposed.
Yeah.
About the number of vendors and who the vendors are and the interest, um, that's being handled by the community's, um, farmer's market planning committee.
Yeah.
Which is comprised of, um, long, long title, um, of a, every core group of, um, very committed folks. There's a co-op representative, there are two town reps, Laura, as well, um, and some folks from the community. So they're the ones that are gonna be finalizing some of those details, but the vendors and some of those other things.
Yeah, but you couldn't go beyond 12 without coming back for site plan.
Can the hours of operation be extended without coming back?
Yeah, we're not, uh, we're not specific to the hours and the dates, because I think three times in a year is probably small, because this is a trial. If it's successful and the, the space works, then I think you'd see it more frequently. If the space doesn't work, then I think you'd see a site plan amendment, yeah.
But rather than moving it across the street or adding the number of vendors, it would not come back to this board.
I mean, not without a significant change.
Well, what other significant changes might trigger that?
I, I don't have a crystal ball.
If there were. If there were demonstrated problems with traffic as a result, would that? Normally it would not.
Well, um, yeah, so if there were demonstrated, I mean, theoretically, we'd need to vet everything when we're approving it. If there's demonstrated traffic problems, probably you're gonna have a lot of public feedback that that's not working very well, and I don't think any of the parties involved wanna see it not working very well. So my guess is that there would be modifications that would require coming back from planning board, but if there's traffic problems in this configuration exactly as it is, they would not have to come back to the planning board.
I, I have.
That's the risk that we take with all site plan approvals, for the record. That's the risk we take with all of them.
I'm seeing, because a number of comments have reached me in the past couple of weeks, and they weren't necessarily directed to me, most of them in fact were not, they're people just talking and what I overheard, and people are concerned about both parking and traffic.
Yeah.
And I'm feeling enough at the site to understand that concern.
Yeah.
Uh, before we, we offered up our side space, um, our board also took a, took a long, hard look at this, and those priorities are also ours, parking, safety, congestion. Those are some of the same issues that we contemplated when we held the chili cook-offs. That's our measuring stick, that's our benchmark as we look at this type of event. It's, it's a pilot, um, um, the way we look at it. But we had a chili cook-off two years in a row. Last year, there were probably between 250 and 300 attendees over a three-hour period. We did use the side lot, there were, I think there were five, um, firehouses and the police department that took, took part in it. And, um, it was, I mean, it was, it was problem-free in terms of traffic and safety. We did have barriers out, we'll have barriers of this consideration. So we saw some similarities in the, in the scale of the event, so that's why we felt comfortable offering up our space.
Thank you, thank you.
Laura, just because safety is such a major concern, is there any way that we could add a condition that, that there will definitely be, um, you know, a traffic safety officer, somebody directing traffic for the duration of the farmer's market?
Yeah, you can always add that to your recommendation, if that's, will of the board, definitely. Um, these were just the two things that we sort of got from the Conservation Advisory Council, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I wanna make sure that we have the, uh, some kind of management to get it started, to see how it goes. Um, if it goes well, and if it's not required, I'd hate to see it, you know, have to, to, you know, just, just me talking here, right? To have it continue if it's not really required because of what action we take, cause there's a, also a cost associated with that, somebody's gotta pay for it, right? But, uh, uh, we could, we could add it for at least the first of, first one to evaluate or something along those lines, cause it's a rec, it's a recommendation to the town board. Town board is going to have a public hearing tomorrow night, and then, uh, when they do have their resolution.
So you can also add, I mean, encourage pedestrian and bicycle amenities, that's not a requirement. It's something that would be helpful to mitigate traffic. You can also encourage, uh, crossing guard during the operation of the market to, you know, to protect safety. That way it's actually in the record that it's important and we've looked at it, but if it's not needed, then you can move past it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, cause I, I, cause I agree with you, so why don't we do that? If the boards agree, we'll, town board's gonna act out at 6:20. 6:20? Okay, the resolution's 6:20, but their public hearing is tomorrow night.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, so we wanna add a condition, and I agree with that. We'll see if the rest of the board does, of course. So we wanna add a condition number three, that, uh, something along the lines, uh, that we have, uh, uh, safety monitors or police stationed.
Encourage crossing guard to promote safety between parking lots, maybe?
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be a police officer, so.
Yeah, right.
I think it's reasonable.
Street. So encourage crossing guard on Knott Street to promote safety between parking lots, or to promote safety?
Along the road as well.
Let's just say to promote safety.
Yeah.
Encourage crossing guard on Knott Street to promote safety.
Use of crossing guards to promote safety.
Yeah. Okay? That's good.
Encourage the use of crossing guards.
Of crossing guards.
Safety, condition number three. Does that sound reasonable?
Like it.
Is it, yeah, that is one of the concerns that I know that we all, we all share. You know, I was like, there was a fatality down there some time ago, uh, and I know, uh, you know, county's looking at things, as we heard, so we wanna make sure we're safe, and I know they, everybody wants to be safe, so. That's the last thing we want is a problem trying to do a good thing, like I said before. Any other comments? If not, we'll have to do a show of hand on changing, adding condition number three, encourage the use of crossing guards to promote safety. Those in favor of the amendment, please do a show of hands, we'll do it that way, and that's unanimous. Okay, so we have a modified resolution. Any other questions or comments on the resolution for the recommendations to the town board? No? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Twitty, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Scruby Tennis?
Aye.
Ms. McPartland?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
With some reservation, aye.
Mr. DiRapino?
Aye.
Jim Walsh?
Aye, resolution's approved, and, uh, we'll move this on to the town board. And again, their public hearing tomorrow night, and after they have a resolution, they'll come back to us to give it the final stamp, assuming, uh, you know, we always listen to hear what the, you know, the residents have to say at the town board public hearings too, and see if anything different comes up that we didn't hear tonight, and we'll take that into consideration also. Okay? All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, that's it for resolutions tonight. We'll get, uh, down to some discussion items, thanks for everybody's patience. Uh, site plan review for a construction facility and storage yard at 397 Anthony Street. Have the applicant here for that tonight? Oh, there we go. Aye.
Hi, I'm Allison Oveen from MJ Engineering. And, uh, you have seen this project before with site plan approval, and since site plan approval, we have decided to, uh, request to have it phased, um, in two phases. Um, I think you have the plans where you could probably see the phasing line. So the idea would be the, the area around the existing building would be renovated as per the plan that was already approved, and then the gravel storage yard would be done at a later date, most likely next spring.
That would be after we come up through the mitigation plan and figure out what you're going to do, it's going to take some time to do all that, huh?
Well, it's because of the, the wetlands right now. The existing wetlands were, we were thought to be isolated, but now there's new jurisdiction trying to solve that whole issue with Army Corps, which will be resolved this winter. So, in the meantime, the applicant would like to do the work around the building, doesn't affect anything with the wetlands on the other side.
Okay. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Would they, would they put like some kind of construction fence or something across the back to prevent any encroachment on the wetlands during the construction period, or...
Yeah, I think there might be fencing up there now, yep.
Yeah, they can get down there and take a look today.
So, my only comment is, we're generally, like, this planning department's generally in favor of the phasing. I think that upgrades to that building are an improvement down there, and, you know, we can work through mitigation of the wetlands, or, I mean, I don't even think to us it matters if there's a storage yard down there. You have a certain amount of time that you can work on it. But we just wanted to make sure that the phasing plan includes the reestablishment of the LC zone, so that, because on the, on the phasing, and I just caught this, I apologize, but the phasing line just kind of stops when it hits the LC zone.
Okay.
So, I would just like to see the phasing line go all the way to the property, so that it's clear that the white pines and that the, you know, that area that is being reseeded is included in phase one, and with that, I feel like the benefits that we worked through for site plan are still being accomplished by phasing. So, my recommendation would be, as long as the phasing is extended all the way to the property line and includes the reestablishment of the LC zone, that I would recommend it.
Okay.
So, they can't use phase two at all?
Can't, no.
Can't touch it?
Because if they mess with it, they have opened up their SWIP and they have to do their detention basin and stuff like that.
Okay.
Right.
So, they basically built the building improvements and around the building itself that is...
Yep.
To get started.
And reestablished LC zone.
Mm-hmm.
So, they're going to use their satellite light, satellite lot across the street, then?
For storing the vehicles right now, yeah.
Yeah, until the wetlands are figured out.
But they could move their staff down to the office building if they renovate it in time, yeah.
Would there be anything to prevent being able to execute one of the three mitigation strategies?
Um, the only thing, they're just, right now, it would be a matter of money. So, we're just waiting to see how it all lays as far as the isolated wetlands, just to, to see if we can save some money for the applicant. There'd be some off-site mitigation required if that was the way to go.
Yeah. So, tonight, basically, you just want to let us know that, talking about a phasing plan, Laura has her comments, and we have to have a...
Call for a site plan amendment for the next meeting if you're comfortable.
Right. And that would condition, whatever conditions we need to put in there that are still open from the original site plan, basically be, the only difference would be the...
It's just going to reference the phased plans, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And if you can just update that phasing line by that, yeah.
You okay with that, Mr. McPartland?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Laura. That was my primary concern as well. The drawing C7 shows clearly phase one versus phase two, but the line abolded. Dotted line does not continue to the edge of the property boundary, and we discussed at length some of the, some of the regrading and reseeding, sort of returning that LC zone to its, more of its original state.
Right.
So, I think it would be appropriate certainly to take care of that while you're paving the new lot.
Oh, of course, yep.
So, that was my only issue.
That sounds good, so, I mean, we have any questions for us? Not, I guess we'll just have a resolution prepared for the next meeting?
Yeah, if you guys are okay with it. Anything else that we want to talk about with it?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Okay, site plan review for a garage, storage, and fueling facility at 31 East Street. Is there an applicant here tonight for that?
I don't see him.
Nobody here tonight?
No.
If, if there's not, I'm going to move, I'm going to move to site plan upgrades for Sunoco Station, 1501, since the other applicant's not here. Why don't you come on forward? We'll, we'll work with you first here, and thanks for your patience tonight, all right? So, maybe we could start out, and you could just tell us about the plans. How's that?
On the station that we have right now, it's, the, the facilities themselves, the underground storage tanks are a little bit older, so they're near the end of their life cycle. We've had no failures. We've never missed a, a test from DEC or anything like that, but they are old.
Being proactive.
Exactly. Canopy, same deal. It's just older, leaking. We've had it looked at several times. There's not very many repair options left for the decking, the upper part of the canopy itself. The poles are okay, the actual poles themselves that hold the canopy up, we have no failure in there or anything like that, but again, they're old.
Could you do me a favor, state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott Quinville, and I'm with Red Cap Sales.
Okay, thank you.
That's the, you know, we own that site, and Jason is the retailer at that site.
Okay.
So, what we're looking to do is, I thought we were replacing in kind from coming back up to Town Hall yesterday, or it was this morning, actually. I realized that the canopy we proposed is bigger than the one that was there, simply an oversight. 720 feet was the number you gave me. I believe that would be a 30 by 24 canopy, if my math's right, very standard. I'm sure I could have that. You know, we have nothing ordered yet, we have...
Okay, so the, it looks like the existing that's approved by a variance from the ZBA is 720 square feet, and the sketch that you submitted was a 80, 800 square feet, right?
Yep.
So, you can bring it back down to 720?
No problem at all.
That's nice.
What would the dimensions be with the 800?
Most likely, it would be 30 by 24. If you think about that lot, it's not very deep. So, 24 is about the, the deepest we could get a canopy. Otherwise, it'll get too close to the street, too close to the power lines, all that stuff. So, I would say it's 24 by 30 right now, so it would be truly a replacement in kind.
Yeah, it's almost square. I took a look at it today, when you're looking...
It's going to be a little bit rectangular, but...
It could be a little bit longer.
Yeah, I mean...
Parallel to the road, but...
The, yeah, the, the problem with that is, is...
It's going to be the variance.
Not even that. It's, it's, even if we could get one skinnier and longer, let's say, it just wouldn't fit the property properly, because now you have bay doors there and cars are coming in and out there, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't give them clearance to get into the garage part.
So, you're not changing, changing the number of dispensing units? It's, everything's the same?
No, 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 nothing at all. We want to take the, the old stuff that is getting near its end of life and replace it with brand-new, state-of-the-art, good stuff.
Well, if, if you're, if making, if you're going to modify the application to change it to the same size, there's, there's nothing for us, right?
Yeah, well, we could have approval at the next meeting.
Well, do we, do we have to approve it? Because it's, if it's just a building permit, who would do anything, right? Because it's within the previously approved variance?
Yeah, is there any signage or anything that's changing?
Not at all.
Um...
We could bring that up at a different meeting perhaps sometime, but...
Well, we could double-check. It could potentially just be a building permit.
All right, we'll check.
But worst-case scenario, it'd still need site plan review, so we could, if it doesn't, if he can go back to 720...
You need a stamped 720 drawing, correct?
Yeah.
I should have that to you tomorrow. It's not an issue at all.
Yeah, so then it would either, we can double-check that, or it would come back to you guys for final site plan next.
All right, if she can issue the building permit because you're in compliance, and then they can issue it, and there's no changes, it's just a replacement in kind, I'm okay with that, and if she finds out that there is something that we at least need to give a thumbs up, well, then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting and take it that way, either way.
All right, so right back up to the office with the revised drawing.
With the 720.
Perfect, okay, I can certainly handle that.
Yeah, so, we like them, those are easy, we like that.
Me too.
That's great. Any other questions for the applicant, or you have any questions for us, or anything else we need to discuss? No? All right. All right, sounds good. I'll come into the planning office and building department and the updated thing, and they'll help you out.
Just as soon as I can, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming in, appreciate your patience tonight. All right, and we'll move back to site plan review for a garage, storage, and fueling station at 31 East Street. That's for discussion tonight. Interesting, so, when I read the agenda statement, I didn't read the denial, I didn't realize it is existing until I took a ride up there. It's the one that's in front, so it's already there, right? But it also states that the, uh, fueling tank, probably, excuse me, as a previous nonconform use, was indoor and cold storage only, outdoor storage and fueling vehicles is an expansion. So, there are, you know, there are some outdoor vehicles up there. Was there a building permit when they got there?
No.
They just, they just went and put it in?
So, this is actually the sister building to the Arter Matia building that we looked at, I don't know, a couple of months ago?
Exactly.
This is the sister building to it.
On Aqueduct Road, the one that, the Sculptor or the...
Yeah.
Historic Restoration Company there.
So, he had to go through us because he had outdoor storage, and we ended up making him screen it, and...
Yep.
I don't know, David, you were the project lead on that, do you remember that one? There was a couple of other things, and he had to clean up the area. He was in Office Technology and Light Industrial Zone. This is an RR zone, so it's different zoning, but...
My first takeout, you know, was, is that, you know, I took a ride through the neighborhood. You're up there somewhere also, right?
Yeah, yes.
I took a ride around, it's, you know, it's unique up there. There's a variety of, of homes, and, oh, this is right at the end of that East Street where it's like a, kind of, kind of...
It's a cul-de-sac now, yeah.
And, you know, and there is, there is one house pretty close proximity.
Yeah, on the, on their side of the road, yeah.
And I, and I was just, I was concerned that, for me, that, since it is rural residential, you know, and it seemed like, you know, expanding the use, you know, above and beyond, you know, what it was before, right? Because before, it was just storage town. So, I was a little concerned, I guess, you know?
I mean, as a matter of principle, right? He's on notice that it was a nonconformity. He bought it, he had actual notice of his limitations of use. Now he's coming to retrade its use, in theory, right?
Right, he's essentially expanded the use without a building permit. He was noticed and ordered, and that, he filled out a site plan application, but it, it gets denied because we can't say that that's okay. So, I guess the question now is, we, we would, we have issued the denial, but we do a recommendation in the zoning board as well, so it might be a good time to guide the applicant on our initial thoughts, to see if there's things that he could do or change, or...
Well...
Or if we, you know, or if he just needs to figure out another place to store his vehicles and remove the fueling station.
Yeah, I mean, one of the concerns, I guess, again, is if it starts expanding, right? There's a pretty good-sized area outside storage there. I'm not sure how much he utilizes inside. Uh, there was a, I know, there was something, I thought I read something about not working, you know, not working outdoors was only storage outside, but there's a, there's a truck on jack stands there, so it looks like...
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it looks like, you know, he maybe just took the wheels off, I'm not sure, which, you know, minimal maintenance, I'm not saying that they're working on the vehicles there, but I guess I was just concerned because it's residential, you know? And it's, you know...
It's so close to the bike path.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just my...
The owner bought the property with actual knowledge of its use.
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, yeah.
That it was nonconforming.
It could easily turn into, you know, a, a commercial thing with the fuel and more vehicles, and it's, you know, it's a great location, and it's a great-looking lot and garage, so I can understand his desire.
Sure.
But I'm also concerned about the neighbors, I guess, you know?
Have you ever had any concerns from the neighbors at all?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
This isn't a stage where notices would have gone out or anything?
No, it isn't, yeah. I actually, so I don't actually know how the neighbors feel.
I just didn't know overall, I mean, as their day-to-day business goes, if they've, there's been any issues.
No.
Is there any, like, DEC or permits or anything required in order to buy an external fuel station?
I would think so, but we aren't able to get to the final building permit because it has to be denied.
Yeah.
But yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to hear what anybody else's thoughts on this one, but I was a little bit taken back, I guess. You know, I feel bad for the applicant, but like Mr. Scruby-Tennis says, you know, it was cold storage, great, great storage area for a small business, but if it's, you know, a small business that's doing well, which is good for him, I hate to see it expand on that site, I guess would be my, my, my gut reaction.
Well, of course, the town was immune to the zoning, so the town could pretty much do what it wanted there, but whether it's a good idea to let somebody else not only resume the use, but expand upon it, I don't think it is. And that whole area has been changing for good over the years.
There's a lot of work going on up there, there's, you know, there's several properties for sale, but it's a kind of a unique area up there, you know?
I like it.
Yeah.
A lot of people like that they're closer to nature there and everything else, yes.
I mean, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a good, looks like it's a good-sized lot, right, Laura? I mean, how many acres is it?
You know, I don't actually think this map is fully up to date, because you can see that the East Street goes completely down to the old, and that when the DOT came in and did that cul-de-sac, they did takings here, so this doesn't fully reflect the takings, I think, of when they did their, but it's close. It's close, and it's, um...
Even if it's 30,000 square feet, it's, you know, it's a good three-quarters of an acre, right, that lot, you know?
Yeah, it's close.
I mean, it is also in the residential, an option would be, you know, to put a, put a home up there and have a nice garage for...
Yeah.
You know? Also, you know, so it isn't like it's, there's not possibility there, you know?
Yeah, and it's true.
And it's right there at the cul-de-sac and right near the bike path, it could make a, a nice residence there, you know?
So, the difference to the, if, if it was proposed design to make it a single-family home, what would, what would the storage limitations look like in that instance?
Um, then it, then it is governed by our, essentially our zoning for single-family residential codes, and actually, we have, we have a code that you can't have more than a one-ton vehicle, I think, in your driveway, something like that.
Yeah.
And, or multiple axles. So, if the truck is too big, you can't have it on a single-family property. And then, you know, just the standard, you can't park the cars on your lawn, they have to be in your driveway, that kind of thing.
So, I was up there today, across the street on the cul-de-sac there, it looks like there's several non-registered vehicles, look like they're in the front yard.
Yeah, they kind of are, aren't they?
Yeah, so, I mean, so, yeah, I agree with what you say, but it looked like, I think there, you know, they look like there were Jaguars or something like that, you know?
That's not the same property, though, right?
No.
No, it's not, but I'm just saying, but to the point, somebody asked a question about what you could have, and if it was a, a single-family residence, and there's, you know, restrictions on unregistered vehicles in the front yard, right? So...
Yeah, we'll look at that one.
Yeah.
I didn't even think about that.
So, anyway, I, I'm not, I'm not too hot on this one, on the expansion of use, is my guess is where, kind of where I'm at. Is this just for discussion and give some feedback to the applicant?
Yeah, I mean, Jeffrey's been working with them. I think it's useful to get an opinion of the planning board, and we can guide them when they come in on the denial. We can certainly say it's always your right to bring an application forward, but you're, it's an uphill battle if, you know?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, a use variance is an uphill battle anyway, but...
I think this is going to be a tough one for the, for the ZBA also, not that, you know, obviously, the ZBA has their own authority, but it just seems like it's a tough one.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nonconforming use right now, but if it gets a use variance, then it's technically conforming, you know, as a business there, so...
What is the business?
Um, it's Barbera Concrete, I think.
Yeah, Masonary or something along those lines.
Isn't it in the application? Oh, yeah. It's Barbera Concrete. I think that runs a business out of there. It's something like that.
So what's the, a ton of information in the application?
I don't.
Yeah, to Laura's point too. There's two garages at the town disposition years ago, this being one and the other one on Aqueduct. Uh, Aqueduct, you said is.
It's zone, Aqueduct, the sister one is zone office technology.
We had a tough time there. So you can imagine putting a fuel station, expanding the use and parking there, right? Even though it'd probably be obviously more appropriate than a rural residential area, you know? So it's a, it's a tough one for me, but again, I'm only one person. I'd love to hear what the board has to say.
Yeah, so.
And if you haven't had a chance to take a, take a ride up, take a ride up, uh, is it middle, hang a ride on Benedict and then right on the east? And it's right there. You can't go any further. You can't miss it, you know?
Yeah. So we'll just reach back out to the applicant and invite him to watch, you know, the video and get your opinions and then see how he wants to move forward.
Yep. So I'm concerned, but I'm only one vote and so.
I'm, I'm with the chairman. I, I have a lot of reluctance for the project.
Likewise.
All right. All right. Give some, give the applicant some feedback and, uh, we'll see what he has to say. And said, I, you know, I hate to impact a small business, but you know, but if he could find a more appropriate place to grow, that would have been, obviously be great for everybody. All right. Anything else on that? No? We'll move on the agenda. Okay. Reports, Laura, you got anything for us tonight?
Um, the Holocaust Memorial vote is probably June 20th. So potentially keep an ear out for it. I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah. Anything new on, uh, 1380, Mr. Hess or Laura? Did we hear, hear anything on that at all? Vanant, where? Nothing? Any questions for Laura at all? No? All right. Commission Business then. Mr. DiRapino, anything tonight?
None.
Ms. Gold?
No.
Chairman Partland?
I had a question, uh, for Laura. I, um, I heard that it's possible we, um, received or the town received or will receive another revised application for Harry's Mobile on Route 7. Is any, have you seen any action on that? I know.
No.
There was, that kind of fizzled out.
But they are under enforcement with the town right now because they installed the blade signs that we denied. Um, the corner of Knott Street and Balltown Road. So those were installed without a permit. So if you have heard rumblings, it may be because essentially they have to come to us for those signs as well. So they were cited for work without a permit. And so I think in order to resolve that work without a permit, he either has to take those signs down or come to us. And then we could vote on the signs. I mean, I'm not speaking for you guys, but obviously if we didn't like them on the corner of Knott Street and Balltown Road, it's an uphill battle on the corner of, uh, is it Algonquin or Mohawk? Kayuga and, um, Route 7. That may be the rumblings.
So they installed them over here on, on Balltown?
No, we said no.
They installed them down at, at Harry's.
They are.
I don't usually go that way, so I didn't even know that.
Yeah, I don't drive that way a lot either, actually.
Yeah.
The red blade signs on the mobile.
The ones I think we had in the discussion, I was Mr. Khan, I think was.
He doesn't have that big of a knock.
Concerned about the rezordi thing on.
I don't think, no.
For the mix that they do.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Those are bolted on.
I, well, since we said no to those, I've been noticing them more and more around. I'm like, I'm really glad we said no to those.
Yep.
And they'll just turn the, the, um, gas light off, the one that has the cash, the cash one. That's off at night, the LED one that he had.
So he probably just turns the power off to the whole, yeah.
But no word on the proposed expansion?
Oh, no. Yeah, I haven't, he, no formal submissions. He's just under essentially a staff worker on the, on those signs right now.
Okay. Anything else, Mr.?
No.
Scruby Tennis? Ms. Shenfield?
Nothing.
And Mr. Laflambeau? And I have nothing tonight. It was a productive night. Thank you, everybody. I have motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Scruby Tennis and already seconded by Mr. McPartland. Thank you, everybody.